Six oh four P M. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anybody from the public that would like to say something? Okay, nothing there. Um, so everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto the report from the Friends. Oh, that's you.
Well, yeah, Wanda can give the report, but the, the, that's okay. I read them. Okay. That's how much I can remember. So the Friends met, they have their event, um, which is going to be at the cinema with a documentarian or documentary filmmaker, um, Helen Whitney. Um, I will send you all the link for that. We'll get it up on the, the website as well. Um, because there's a limited number of seats, so they're going to show her documentary. She's going to talk. And then, um, there's going to be like a little buffet brunch, if you will, afterwards at the cinema.
What day?
Um.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. Okay. Um, so they were working on that. They had a brief conversation about having a fall fundraiser and what would that look like? Um, but I don't think they've come up with anything. I think there was a goal to sort of have one each quarter, do a small fundraiser each quarter.
Um, and then they were also talking about the winter one as well, but they thought they might be too close together.
Yeah.
They were a little uncertain about it.
I mean, for me personally, and I, I would say this to them, A, so they don't, you know, overburden themselves, because I think they've done an amazing job this year, and they've worked very hard, and they've put together some really great events. You know, the fall is when we do our budget votes, um, and have our trustee election. And so, you know, I'm always very cognizant of if we're doing a budget vote and we're asking for a tax increase to also have a fundraiser at that same time. Some people don't always love that, you know, some people, it doesn't even fall on their radar, but that's always something I've been cognizant of. So I wouldn't necessarily use it as a reason to discourage the Friends, but if the Friends are, you know, considering like, we can't really come up with something, I don't want them to feel like they have to do something.
Would they consider coming up, doing something that is not a fundraiser? Just a thought. Just a sort of activity or something that.
Like a fun thing for the Friends to do for like, um.
For the community.
That's what the, um, trips to the city usually are. They don't make money when they do, make it on bus.
Or do something onsite, just something nice that people know, oh, this is a great, this is so nice. Meet the friends.
Tell party kind of thing.
No, just like to make any kind of simple little event here.
Sure.
Something.
That's like to encourage people to join the Friends.
I see where the Friends are. They don't even know.
Open house, an open house.
I'll mention that.
I'm kind of working on.
Just to. Being the Friends are also probably something like a, um, flower arranging with something, because they're all garden, they were all under the gardens.
Yeah, do something, yeah. Whatever, something, yeah, come, you know.
Alright.
We.
Sure.
Plot your house plans or something with the Friends. I, I just think to do something that's not, because I feel like people like avoid sometimes more, oh no, they want money from me and friends. I'm gonna get rid of that pressure, I think, just soften it up.
Join the Friends.
Yeah, just.
Be a Friend.
Oh, book exchange, Friends book exchange.
Sounds like you join the Friends.
I, I think I remember. I, I, I usually send my check, so I never forgotten you something.
Come to me.
I think we don't get a little better organized on.
Um, moving on.
Okay. During, during friend meeting times.
Okay, so that was Friends' report.
That's your report.
Treasurer's report. I just remind everybody, when we approve the report, it includes the report, the warrants and payroll warrant on one cell.
We're doing this through.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, but keep this brief, we're on page six here. You'll see yet another slightly different type of chart. The reason I did this is because, um, we are going to be spending a lot of money this year on the HVAC project. And I think it'd be, I think it was helpful for me, and I think it'd be helpful to everybody on board to be aware of how that's going to play out over the course of the year. And when the Finance Committee met last month, we talked this all through. Um, the way this is showing here, you see that, I'm showing that the first line is the twelve hundred, one million, two sixty-three, sixty-two. That's funds that remain from the initial installments of money that came from the bills, taxpayers. And that money, I'm making you know, that money alone would, would carry us through operations through June. And of course, we're going to be getting a lot more from the village, so presumably, we will be operating, you know, on the top line here throughout the year. The second line is, well, you know, the cushion we talk about a lot of the time. Uh, we started the year with a one point two million dollars. And, you know, as best I can calculate, the cushion is about a million now. Now, these numbers are actually, it's not like they're separate dollars, you know, it's all in one set of accounts. So you can't really look at it separately, except now it's important because basically what we're going to do is try to, uh, fund as much as possible of the HVAC project out of the cushion. You know, which is not very productive money. It's, it's not as important, uh, as the investments are, dollar to dollar, uh, comparison. So we will try to spend down the cushion and then replenish the cushion of, of the investments. That way, we keep the investments working for us longer. It's kind of like if you're, you know, renovating your house, you don't want to take out the, the C D, you know, and right, until right, you're ready to start spending money. Otherwise, you know, you're, you're wasting money. So anyway, uh, our current, our current, uh, assets are the two million, two point two six oh, three, six, two. That's current assets. And the current investments you see here, uh, three million, five seventy-eight, six fifteen. Now. And then I have the grand total. You notice I've annotated these, um, the purpose of the, of the tax money that comes from taxes is to fund our operations. We have actually an obligation to spend all of the money that we get from taxes on the budget. So that's what that's for. Um, the cushion, uh, is really for unbudgeted items. Last year, for example, we absorbed the entirety of the glow up on the, out of the cushion, so it didn't come out of tax money. Uh, and this year, like I said, we'll, we'll absorb as much as we can out of the existing cushion. Uh, and then the other thing we can do is we can invest it short term. And by this, I mean within the fiscal year. Um. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to announce at this point that based on our Finance Committee meeting last month and conversations I had with the uh, investment folks, uh, today, we're going to be tomorrow having a, a big chunk of money come mature on the twenty-first tomorrow. It's about, it's, it's, uh, six seventy-nine, it's, it's around seven hundred thousand dollars. And that money, we, uh, will have no need for this year in terms of spending it, so we're going to push it ahead. We'll take out, we'll reinvest all that for a full year uh, at a very nice rate. It probably could be five percent or very close to it. Especially after the Fed meeting today. Uh, we don't know for sure. I'll, I'll know tomorrow. But, um, the other thing we're going to do is we're going to take an additional two fifty out of the cushion and buy a smaller batch of T bills that will mature within the fiscal year during the period when we're spending money, you know, on the HVAC. So that, again, we're going to have a bunch of pots of money that will become available during the time that we're actually doing the construction. And that, that way, we, we can, uh, uh, you know, maximize our earning in the meantime. So that's, that's the basic idea.
Good question. Money coming due tomorrow. Is that up for a year?
Yes, it was a year at, I don't know, four point something, you know. The, the current, the new rate is going to be better. The new rate is probably going to be at least four point seven or something like that. You know, so yeah, that's been a year. What we're trying to keep, uh, ideally is to keep four blocks of money, one paid out each, one that matures each quarter, and each one of those would be at twelve, twelve months. So we try to, to push everything ahead by a year. The exception is, you know, the short term thing is just something that, you know, I'm experimenting with this year to see if we can earn a little extra money. I mean, it'll earn, you know, a thousand dollars a month extra for us this year, just to, to move that money. And, uh, is that?
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about that much?
How much do you think is for the investment?
It's, it's complicated because, you know, they, what they, they, that's the whole thing about picking up crumbs. In other words, the process of buying them is very complicated. You know, you're buying them on a, yeah.
You're buying them on the third party market.
Third party market, and the bank makes a little bit of money by, what they said, picking up crumbs in the process as this stuff moves through. We don't outright pay a specific fee. We just, you know, a certain amount, it ends up being deducted from the thing as it moves along. So I mean, that's one of the advantages of, of T bills as opposed to some other forms of investment is that, first of all, there's no risk. Um, secondly, no taxes, not that it matters to us, and that, uh, and that the fee structure is such that you don't really feel it. It's really not a significant, uh, uh, thing. Okay, mortgage balance is, is there if you want to look at it. It's, it's down the same way it's always down over the year. Um, as far as the month that was here of, uh, February, revenue was, uh, took a big leap. Fifty percent of our annual budget basically came in from, uh, tax sources. And so, uh, you know, that's why we're in excellent position as far as, as current cap. Our expenses were above average for the month, quite a bit above average, three sixty-seven, five sixteen. You know, it was less than three hundred thousand in February of two thousand and twenty-three. There's two main things that account for this. One was a capital expense on the glow up, which, uh, was left over from last year. A little over thirty-two, seven, eighty-five, pretty good chunk of money. And then, and of course, that was in a sense unanticipated, or that's not in the budget. And then the, uh, the payment for digital books, this is something that those of you who've been on the board for a while understand, those of you that are new. Some of the things we buy, we only spend, we spend it mostly all at one time, and then it covers the whole year. And digital books is one of those charges. We simply pay this big chunk of money, sixty-nine thousand dollars, which we paid in February, and it covers seventy-five percent of the year. Uh, there, there's not going to be significant additional expenditures, so it'll get averaged out over the course of the year. Um. And what's interesting here, here is that if you, if you look down to the next category, uh, this overage for the month is in a sense already been absorbed. It's, it's a little bit, it's fascinating where it's worked. But if you look at January and February, it's seventeen percent of the fiscal year. And despite the fact that we had these overages, we came in within that at just a, a little over fifteen percent that we spent in our budget. So that's great. On the revenue side, um, if we look at those items that are, um, the, the, the tax money is, is, is complicated and it, and it's confusing. But on the revenue side, that's month to month stuff, uh, for example, in contributions, we were, uh, uh, we brought in twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine point three six percent of our budget, as against only eighteen percent of our budget last year at this time, so we're ahead in contributions. And in financial income, as we came in, we've already gotten twenty-six percent of the budgeted expectation as compared to last year, only seven percent at this time. So we're running ahead in both of those areas, uh, which is good. Uh, jumping down to the bill payment list, uh, again, I make the point, we've got a pretty big warrant, fifty-seven checks, total of two hundred and three thousand, uh, two seventeen eighty-eight. Um, but that includes a couple of big items, which again are kind of like, if not once a year, twice a year or something. They're, they're big items that don't come up every month. One is sixty-nine thousand to S C L S, Suffolk County Library System. And then forty-seven thousand and change towards the upgraded lighting fixtures, which we approved as an, uh, an unusual expenditure this year. And that eventually is going to be in, in transferring money and funds at the end of the year. It's going to come out of our, of our.
Yeah.
Cushion, you know, out of our capital, you know, out of our capital accounts. So that's not going to have any negative impact on the, uh, on the operating budget. Payrolls are very normal. Um, current nineteen employees and the current numbers with the current, uh, raise. Any questions?
You said the news are potentially getting a credit back for the lights or for part of the lights.
So I got an email from, uh, Ram, who is the fellow who deals with the rebates. Um, and he's supposed to call me on Friday, um, to discuss it. He said that he's got to do it in two parts to maximize the amount of money that we'll get back. But he's been in touch with, um, John over at, um, G Craig, um, to just confirm different things, like Ram is with the distributor. So he's, they're just, they're doing their things. And I guess, um, the reason that Ram does this and I don't is because P S E N G likes you to jump through many, many hoops before you get your money.
Do you have any sense of like, how much it would be?
I don't, not yet. I think it's, I, I don't want to prop, I don't want to be on record on the internet for the rest of my life promising you an amount of money, which.
Yeah.
Maybe incorrect. So, um, I, once I'll know more on Friday, you should be able to give me an idea.
And we check off something in the sustainability.
We do.
Yes.
Yeah. Wait me for.
It's not a graded exam.
Does anyone else have any questions about the treasurer's report? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
So I am going to give you all one of these. This is a surprise from my report. Nyla is doing a fabulous program, um, which, if any of you want to go to, you need to let me know ASAP, um, because it's an alternate and would require an overnight stay because it starts at seven thirty in the morning and, um, I'm staying overnight because I'm not driving Saturday morning. It's a Tuesday, April twenty-third. It is admittedly during Passover, uh, and I love apologizes for that. Um, but it's their Spring on the Hill program, which was something they had done, um, not last year and the year before. Um, so there is Stephanie Cole Adams, who is sort of like the Tom Bowles, um, who's our library lawyer, but for upstate and Western New York, who's doing a program on library liberties, law and policy. She's a really great speaker, if you ever get the chance to, um, see anything she does on Zoom for Nyla. Um, also hails from library development, using case studies to help library directors avoid or respond to tricky situations. Um, legal resource tools to support advocacy. There's, there's a bunch of different programs that they, they have going on. Um, one of which is media training through the American Library Association. This is a fabulous program that the American Library Association does. This is sort of a truncated version of it, but it's sort of worth going for that, which is why I'm going. Um, and so I just thought, because there's stuff that I think would be of interest to you all as trustees, um, if it's something that any of you have any interest in going to, I just need you to let me know ASAP because the Renaissance fills up quickly.
What's PLDA?
PLDA is the Public Library Directors Association of Suffolk County. Um, we did something different this year, um, and so we're bringing it to the rest of the state. Most of us do a, um, uh, an advocacy or a legislative breakfast. We usually call it the ledge breakfast, where all the legislators in the county come and all the librarians come, and we're like, yay, libraries! And they, you know, get to say things and we clap and it's all very wonderful. But this year, um, instead of us doing that, we chose to meet with our legislators in their districts in our home libraries. So some of you might remember, I, um, it was end of last year, maybe it was December, November, I forgot. Um, Fred Thiel was here. And, um, we met with him and took photos and talked about what was important to libraries and construction grant funds and all of those things. So the Public Library Directors Association of Suffolk County, it was asked to participate in this panel, um, presentation to sort of encourage other library systems to maybe perhaps take this approach, or other libraries to take this approach in advocating for libraries and their communities. Um, so it's not required, um, but if anybody wants to go, please, please let me know. Um, and so then we can, we can talk about my report, um, which is, man, I gotta get through all those financials. How do you do it, Elliot? Um, so, uh, Al Castor finished all his onsite stuff for the audit process. He's working on it. I'm sure he's going to take a little, you know, a little break for tax season to take care of that, um, as all auditors do. And then we should be pretty much ready to go for an audit presentation. We've done it several different ways here since I've been here. There, we've done it where the auditor has presented just to the audit or the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee comes back to the Board and recommends that the Board accept the audit at their recommendation. We have also done it last year because it was Al's first year. We've had Al come into a meeting and do an entire presentation to the entire Board. For me, I've got to be at either one. Um, but do you all have a sense? Do you want him to come speak at Board Meeting? Or do you want it to just go to the Finance Committee? Do you have an opinion?
Would he come to a regular?
Yeah.
I, no, I think it's good because it's important that we all.
Okay.
Get that information.
Everybody feels good about this?
I know.
Alright, so what I will.
He's got a ten minute time on the dough.
Yeah. Ten minutes. Yeah, he can do it in ten minutes. If you all don't have too many questions.
No, don't, he should.
You're just kidding. He can do it in twelve minutes if you do have.
Serve food, he could have my moon pie.
He can have your moon pie. Um, no, he is, he'll, he'll, if you want him to do it in ten minutes, he'll do it in ten minutes. If he needs forty-five minutes for everybody to feel comfortable in accepting the audit, he'll do forty-five minutes. He'll come back to a second meeting if you need him to.
We get it in advance though.
You do. You get it in advance to review.
Um, but it's important that we.
It is.
Have sufficient time with him, so.
So that's awesome. We are fiscally responsible.
That's, that's the most important part of that meeting. If we do it once a year, it should dominate the meeting.
There you go. See, I knew you were kidding, Dan.
I knew you were kidding too, but still, even so.
So, um, let's see, the community survey, Ariselle translated the community survey. And because she is just an angel that walks among us, she actually also formatted it the exact same way I formatted the print document, so I don't have to reformat what she translated. But I do have to get it all into Survey Monkey, um, which is not as simple as a cut and paste, which was a big sad trombone for me this morning. So that'll be ready to go out. Um, we'll do some corrections, probably middle of next week, we'll send out an e-blast and push that out and, um, start to sort of soft launch the, uh, the survey. Um, and let's see, we, um, we've been hopping. It's been like, it's almost like we don't have enough, um, chairs for, for butts. Like, we've had a lot of people just hanging out, using the library, um, teens coming in, hanging out on the steps, causing a ruckus. You know, I love nothing more than teens outside my office causing a ruckus. It sparks joy. Um, kids coming in, it's just, it's been nice. And part of that, I think, is the warmer weather, but it's just, it's been nice to have a lot of people, uh, in the library after our, our quiet season. Um, and also I did want to point this out, Donna, who compiles our circulation statistics, always, um, creeps on the other libraries in the district and looks at their statistics. And, um, we are the only East End South Fork library to show an increase in circulation for February. So.
Hmm.
Um, our new chairs are here and people love them. Um, and, uh, we're, we're working on that final circular nook in the children's room. We had looked at fabric and it was just the wrong color, we were hoping. And so, um, we were sad. Um, let's see, we recent, we, we have now told people they're not allowed to eat up in the rotunda.
So is that.
Um, so, um, we figured, um, somebody was, was doing magic or just really hungry and, um, either ironically or not so ironically chose the one thirtieth, which is witchcraft, to, to hide their chicken bones in our stacks. Um, so, yeah, no. Uh, News Twelve, do you guys watch News Twelve?
Yes.
I, I don't have.
Calamity.
Alex, um, wandered into the library, was very delighted to see our seed library. And, um, we talked about it, and he posted about it on his social media, and it was really nice to see us in there. And then when you started to read the comments, all the people who commented, they were like, the Lindenhurst Library does this, and my library does this, and this is such a great program. And so it was a very nice.
The seed.
We planted the seeds for the seed library.
And you can pick something up on this.
And we, it is not, it is not a graded test. Um, and so, um.
Checklist, no, it's not a great test.
Big job.
Just want to check things out.
Almost there.
Like stretch out, do your list.
Checklist, I'll take care of.
Um, I'll be in charge of that.
And also, um, just so, so you all know, uh, we have turned on the Public Library Connect feature of Libby slash Overdrive in conjunction with the school district sister product of Overdrive called Sora. So there's a school district product called Sora. Students, teachers can use it, um, in the classroom. It's, it's ebooks and audiobooks, but there's some gamification. There's some lesson plans for teachers, things of that nature. But what this, um, Library Connect program piece of software allows it to do ones when it gets turned on, is if kids, um, want to check something out from the Public Library Collection, Libby, and they don't know what their library card number is, they can actually do that with their school login. Um, so it's just an easier way to get those kids into our collection. Uh, other districts have done it. Nobody has seen more than like a one percent increase in use. Um, and since we have, um, sort of leveled out in terms of super users of the Suffolk Cooperative, um, digital book collection, I felt like this was something that we could do. But it's also something we should do because we want our kids to have access to our resources.
Will we know? Is that trackable?
It is trackable, yeah. Um, so, you know, next month, if I see like our ebooks went up, you know, ten thousand bucks, I can actually go in and see if that's just because we have somebody really excited about reading ebooks, or if it's a Sora, um, check-in. So we can, we can manage that. Um, and it's, it, you know, and it's something we can turn off if it becomes financially unattainable. That being said, I do not believe that that will be the case. It has not been the case for any library in Suffolk County. Um, and then we went to lots of meetings, um, because we went to, to lots of meetings. Um, statistics, I already told you, our circulation is up compared to our, our libraries in other parts of the East End. Everything's looking good. Program attendance is looking good. Um, we're, we're happy clams. And then you all read the personnel report. So.
Then you can now tell me this.
Brujada.
Brujada. I forgot that. Alrighty, hold on. Committee reports.
Oh, you guys have.
You didn't do the statistics.
I did do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just went off of them.
Well, that was just, that was you, you don't.
They're good.
Yeah, they're good. Um, but you do need to approve the personnel report.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I forgot I have a little straw, sorry. Okay, personnel.
Personnel did in fact have meeting, right? I think we, I thought we did.
That was for the last.
Oh, that was the last one?
Yeah, we talked about it without you.
Oh, that's nice.
Because you missed.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was no personnel.
I think that there was, is, is the issue with regard to your contract.
Uh, we did mention that, um, it is a contract negotiation year for me. We also mentioned that we are investigating, um, dental and vision insurance, which, um, I, I pulled the other libraries on the East End, and it's just, it's, it's the Wild West. Everybody's sort of made their own rules on how they, um, have chosen to fund uh, dental and vision, or if, like, there's no consistency in policy. So.
Can I tell you that we offered dental and vision and, um, most people have, end up having to submit it. They submitted it as an out of network because there are very few of the tenants out here who actually realize you see dental functions, but this is a one, another island that may be different. Um, and vision we also offer, and Costco is still twenty percent cheaper than vision, any of the vision, of the eye doctors.
That, that seems to be. That, that seems to be. That seems to be what we've sort of gotten to the bottom of with regards to vision, it's very cheap. But it's, I mean, like, not that I'm telling everybody to go to Costco, but it's, you know, go to Costco, um.
Also, a couple of different, uh, dental plans that we've, I've had personally, they don't cover anything. So you can't do anything that you need to have done, you want to having to pay for it out of pocket anyway.
Yeah.
But then don't you get a chance to submit those invoices to your?
And you get a percentage. The people who work for us do it because we pay for part of the dental insurance, so for them it's really cheap and it's worth it. But then Dave and I don't do it anymore because it's just not.
Well, it's voluntary, right? So whether, whether we, we, regardless of how we choose to fund it, it's a voluntary program. So, and we would need a minimum of two employees to, to take that insurance for it to, for us to be able to often. But, um, I, before we get too in the weeds about this, um, you know, we'll let the personnel committee meet and discuss. And I will, my goal is to get a little more info from some of the other libraries that, that offer, cause. There's just no consistency in terms of what everybody does.
Okay, the finance.
Oh, we didn't meet this last month. Did not meet, though I think we should meet sometime before the next meeting to follow up on, uh, where we stand in all our outgoing projects.
Keep in mind, it's okay that these groups did not meet because there's only been like twelve days between board meetings.
But I, I would like to meet sometime in mid-month.
We'll do it, we'll make it happen.
Policy?
We did not meet, but, um, we need to meet, um, once the survey is out.
Outreach?
We did not meet either.
Mash park? We met that, we right here in this room.
Congratulations.
That was wonderful, but I have to say, there was someone aboard that preferred a meeting at the park. But we'll see what happens. Um, so park board. The school teams have started using the fields for spring sports. More tree work will be done, big old dead oak tree coming down. Limbs overhanging areas that are dangerous, so that will happen. Um, the finance committee presented a preliminary operation budget for twenty twenty. For twenty twenty five. And the governance committee discussed with the board members. Term limits asked for the bylaws of the park. And have one for the books.
One for the books did end at a meeting last week. Um, we have still committed to the June fifteenth date. We have narrowed down, uh, the number of houses we think we are going to have right now, I think we have three locations, but. Could expand to four, possibly even five, right now the big issue is which. Authors or artists are going to commit, I think we have one confirmed, uh, artist.
Start today, so I'm pretty sure we'll have a second confirmed by.
Okay, very good, we had some very, very good ideas, so that looks like we're ready to go. We'll be firming everything up, I think by the end of this month, we have to get out the newsletter. And at that time, we'll be announcing the date as well as the authors, that's the game plan as it stands right now. There'll be a twenty-five dollar. Ticket fee, patuity honor, and whatever it is. Donation.
But like donation, like if you're going to, like.
The suggested donation, um, it's not gonna be dinner, we've said it's just gonna be, uh, wine. Uh, spirits and whatever else the host, uh, hosts care to do, so hosts wanna do more than that. They're more than welcome to do that, and that's where we are.
Now, how does this, this work, do the, um. Attendees pick which home and authors, okay.
I'm sure each of the authors will come with their own coterie of, uh, hangers-on, people that they wish to, you know, have there, but. It should work, it'll be a starting point, a starting point for the one for the books.
And scholarship.
Um, did not meet, but the policy and the application, Ariselle's been translating like crazy. Uh, has been translated, it did reach out to Vos Latina, um, and I have. Um, about a week to get the ad to them for, for publication. And then, you know, the ad to the Sac Harbor Express is, is an easy enough thing. Um, so, um, working on those, and again, that's something we'll get out next week into the papers. Um, next week, week after, I, you know, um, and, and that's, that's that.
Okay, all business, each better.
Okay, so the, the wells were emergency cleaned, um, and the pressure is. Is holding steady at much lower than it, than it was, which is great, um, but it's just buying us time. Um, so we are there with that, uh, John McPully and I met via Zoom with Patrick. To go over the RFP and the drawings, um, with regards to the drawing, there were a couple of things that needed to be added. Something else we needed to give to the, um, uh, we were asked to submit is, um, sort of a picture. Of what it's gonna look like on the side of the building, not like a, a drawing picture, but like. I'm gonna say a rendering, but it's not, but like, it's not a rendering, it's just like, this is what it's gonna look like from the street, basically, yeah. Not, it's not even a sketch, it's sort of like, here's the side of the building. Here's a box, a sketch.
It's a courtroom sketch.
It's a court, it is, it's a courtroom sketch, um, and, um. I'm glad Patrick did it and I didn't because I would have drawn a box with like a little stick figure me and some trees, um, so it's, that's that. Um, I reached out to the permit coordinator, I am waiting to hear back. Uh, I did not hear back from her today, so I'm going to give her a call tomorrow, just to confirm that she can see my email. The goal is still to move very quickly, but right now, the concern, and then this was the conversation John and I had. Yesterday, 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 um, was that because of the lead time for the equipment. And because we don't wanna buy very expensive equipment without, um, the village saying, yes, you may put that very expensive equipment where you want to put it. Um, we may have to pull that piece from the RFP. And the library might have to purchase the equipment, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so if we have to pull that, then we need to, um, change the, the scope of the RFP. Just a little bit, not to include that.
I thought that, that you already made the decision that you would try to have the library purchase the equipment.
If we.
That would be, in a sense, would be better for us.
If, if we can do it, um, if, if, I mean.
I mean, still, we, obviously, we need the, we need the, the permit.
Yeah.
Uh, but. Our control of the process and cost.
Yeah, I, I mean, the cost, uh, the cost is what the cost is gonna be, like, they're, they're still going to make money on that piece of equipment. Because even if we buy it, the company that we choose to do the whole project is the one who's going to have to coordinate getting it here and placed. And so there, there will be a cost there, um, but it's also easier to sometimes let. The company doing the project, like, just order the.
They have better relationships.
They do. Yeah. So, um, it's just like I said, it's a timing thing, um, and so, once I know more, you all will know more and hopefully I will know more. Uh, before building some.
If you're trying to reach me and not making use my husband's name, Rose, Babe Rose. And say I'm his wife and then I'm, I've been nagging you to.
Okay.
To talk to her.
Sure.
Has, he calls her and goes right through, so. Just use his name. New business?
Guys, we met twelve days ago.
Just one thing, after the sustainability, because I know it's not a test, there's no test, but. This is a lot of paper for each of us, couldn't we, um, reduce it? Cause I read the financials on my computer before we come in. And I read the minutes from last meeting before we come in. And I actually read the director's report before we come in, but I kinda like to have a long, because I kinda go through that. But if it was down to the director's report, new business statistics and, uh, the treasurer's report, but not all the. Yeah, we could reduce the paper in here a lot.
If we do this, is there a box we can check off on sustainability?
There is, but you know, the other thing is, most of us don't take these home with us, so.
We do cut them, the stuff that isn't confidential information, we do cut into scrap.
Yes.
Even so, isn't it possible to get a screen in here, we can just view it that way?
I mean, we could, I mean, we could also, I mean, something we did in Bridgehampton is we bought. Nine iPads and the iPads came out for the board meeting.
It's not a bad idea.
Which is also something we can do, and then, you know, you guys can. And, um, have the board packet digitally in front of you.
Then there'd be no paper at all.
Then there would be no paper at all, the one thing we did do in Bridgehampton, just because it was a little bit easier. Is the, everybody got a paper agenda and an iPad, cause when you're on the iPad, like, if you wanna go back to the agenda.
I think the agenda page, but, I mean, the packet you give for the public is much smaller because you don't. Include as much of the financials and stuff.
Yes, we don't include the payroll reports.
But I'm just, as it's, it's a lot of paper, and even if you use it for scrap, it's still a lot of paper.
How much for the?
Does anybody, I mean, occasionally, I will look at stuff in here, but there.
We wanted something to print, we could print it out at home.
But then that's still use of paper.
When you're reading it, something kind of catches your.
Well, yeah, right, but then you don't have to print up.
Digital, but I, I'm also, I'm just, I'm just re-veated.
Well, how do people feel about it? I mean, I have to read off this stuff anyway. I've, I've, Lance and. I don't look at it. So, yeah, so I don't need to, I mean, I look at it at home before the meeting, I don't mind that. I basically look at the agenda page and, you know, the couple of little pages, I don't really need the giant financial pages to look at during the meeting.
Okay, do you guys want iPads or no?
Yes, I, I both take a vote. Kinda, or no?
I mean, uh, if you want to vote on it, you can, you don't have, you.
The only other option I think would be to have a, a screen up. And then you could direct the conversation to a particular screen, but then we wouldn't be able to toggle back and forth if someone was more interested in looking at. You know, uh, revenues as opposed to expenses.
I don't mind an iPad, it's fine.
Oh, could the iPads also be used?
Yeah, yeah, yes and no. It's one of those things where like, in, in theory, yes, we've actually very much moved away from. Public iPads, cause people just don't want them, um, because it's just not useful for what people come in here to do digitally. Um, and then also the board packets that we would populate onto the, the iPads. Um, contain, um.
Yes.
Confidential information, and so, you know, it's one of those things where I would just, if we were going to use them for the public, then I'd have to make sure they were all signed out. And we deleted everything off them and, you know.
That, that's a bit difficult.
Which is all things that I can do, but.
No, 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 I mean, I, I don't wanna make it.
Yeah.
We could use Google Drive, you could download those, all those too, we all have Gmail accounts now, thanks, you know. To the love of the library, we could just log into our Gmail account there and look at it on, you know. Yeah, with docs or, no, not on our phone, I can't read on this phone, I can barely read it on my computer, but I'm saying you could. Anyway.
Oh, you mean on the iPad and go.
Right, on the iPad, you could go into your own personal, like, section.
And pull it up.
And pull it up. Just saying.
But you already have as an attachment to an email, I'd probably, so.
Yeah. So if we had iPads, we could, the iPads could be used in the library, although, as you said, people don't probably want them anymore.
Then there's the cost of the iPads themselves, then there's the cost, we're gonna be just using them twelve times a year perhaps. And then giving Kelly an extra effort of having to wipe those and upload information on each of those.
Once they're set up for the board, they're set up for the board, I mean, I could also, and there are libraries that do this too, I mean, the. I'm on my school board and my school board issued me a MacBook that collects dust in my, in my living room, right? So, we could also issue you all a board iPad and, um, you know, it has. All of the stuff on it and we can.
Why don't we go ahead next month without the paper, without the iPads and see how it goes?
Okay.
Do you know what I mean, and see if like.
But I think that it's, it's helpful though, when like, especially when Elliot's making a presentation, I think the visual is, is, is quite important. So if you need to put a big screen TV up or something like that.
Well, they'd have your screen here, do it that way.
Screen here, we could do, that's, that's even better, there you go.
But. Do you, do we need the, all the financials or do we need his report?
Well, if you're gonna do it up on a screen, you put the whole report on in case there's, we need to reference something, anyone has a quick question. Great, let's go to the page, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to have the whole report there, right, it's better to have everything than not.
I could put the public facing, which would have everything except, I, here's the thing, we bring the payroll reports. Well, now they're in your packets, but we can bring the payroll report to the meetings, we bring all the financials to the meetings. So that if, there they are, I accidentally left them between, um, Robyn and Michael, that's the warrant of checks, so if any of you like. As part of your due diligence, as board members, if any of you wanted to look through them, um, and make.
I saw them all.
Um, make sure they're not made out to Dana and Michael.
I think it's wrong.
So, so for the next meeting, so nobody gets a binder.
Alright, if we get an iPad, I want one, I want my, uh, that's what the key is.
They get you that in underwear.
You don't think I already have a pair of underwear in style?
Alright, so no binders, unless, unless somebody feels strongly that they want the whole packet, just. Tell me and say I want a binder, and I will make you a binder.
So you will hand out agendas.
I will hand everyone an agenda and we will put it on the screen up here.
Okay, um, okay.
So, and you're still gonna be sending it to us anyway?
Yes, you'll still get it, yeah, you'll still get it Friday.
So we'll get an agenda, Elliot's report.
Just the report? Just the, the cover page of the report.
As paper, as paper?
And the statistics.
Yeah, anything that's on John Jermaine Letterhead.
Okay, so what, so now I'm just, now it's the whole package. Like, so here's, here's where we're at, I can give you the agenda, I can have everything else up on the screen as we discuss it.
Okay, and see how that works.
And we'll see how that works, and if you feel like, cause we can put Elliot's report, it's a very big screen, I promise to move. My melon out of the way of it, um, and we'll just, we'll pop it up on the screen.
Right, get yourself a laser pointer or whatever it is and, you know.
You guys will be allowed.
No, but, well, it's just, though it's making a presentation or something, and you say, okay, look over here at the third line and. It just makes it that much easier.
Okay, so just to reiterate, it's only the one page you're giving us?
I'm only giving you guys the agenda.
Okay.
If you, as the secretary, would like the whole board packet, I will give you a binder and a whole board.
I don't want the whole thing, I would just like to have a copy of, um, the agenda, your, the.
To have a copy of, um, the agenda, your, the director's report. And then Elliot's just top page. That would be perfect for me.
I'd like the same thing.
Three pe, three pieces.
Yeah, I think we shall get those three pieces.
Okay, so everybody's.
Elliot's narrative.
Director's report.
And the statistic.
Elliot's narrative. And the statistic. There's the thing, you're going to get the whole director's report. So that's going to be my written report, the statistics and the personnel report.
You know, it's changing. We're not good to this. Okay. And the other? Wanda, anything? We don't have any, we don't have any executive session?
No.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six fifty-four.
I'll second.